...to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum present, barely. We have two council people that are out of town, out of country, wherever they are. They're not here tonight, but you'll stop or stand. Our Assistant City Manager, Bill Atkins, is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Chief, you're up.
I get the Tri-City Business Alliance representatives.
Oh, yeah, happy day.
Tonight, we're actually honored to have the members of the -- you all can get back here if you want and then actually talk to everybody. Tonight, we're honored to have the Tri-City Business Alliance here, present, represented by Dr. Rick Barrett, who's going to speak momentarily. But every year, we have an event the police department participates in. It's a back-to-school event at the Access Health Building on Texas Parkway, the 300 block. And we hand out school supplies. And every year, Sergeant Smith and Lieutenant Jasden Hurd go around with Ms. Betty Graham, our command staff office manager, and hit all the local stores and ask for donations so we can hand it out to the kids for school supplies. Well, this year, we were blessed by the Tri-City Business Alliance, who's donated some funds. And I'll let them tell you that story here in a moment. So we didn't have to go and ask this year. We went back to those same stores that have always helped us out through the kindness of their heart and reinvested the monies that were donated by the Tri-City Business Alliance back into those businesses that have been helping us out for years. So you see, it's gone full circle. So every year, it gets bigger and better. And if I could, I'm going to get the police department crew to come up here and join our partners with the Tri-City Business Alliance and the Exchange Club. So I'll let Dr. Barrett speak and explain all that. But again, they do an amazing job, both of these organizations, and we can't do it without our community partners, and this is a fine example of that. So, Dr. Barrett?
Thank you very much. There's not really a whole lot more to say. You stole the limelight. Thank you very much. You said I had two hours to speak, and you took most of it.
[inaudible]
Oh, okay.
Yeah. To see you in a suit and tie, it's worth 20 minutes.
I dressed up for you tonight.
Yeah, that is an accomplishment.
Well, we're honored to be here, and we're honored to present the police department with the check for $2,500. What we did is about a year ago, came up with a program, and we were fortunate to be cosponsored with the Exchange Club of Missouri City, who donated some funds for us so that we could make T-shirts that say "Back the Badge." And we've sold those T-shirts through different events and through some of our offices at my office. And we were fortunate enough to raise $2,500 to support the police department. And one of the suggestions was that we support the back-to-school program. And Jasden Hurd was supportive in that, and we partnered on that. And now, congratulations to him as he is promoted. All because of this $2,500.
Yeah.
So we'd like to present this to you all. And come on in, gentlemen.
No, no, you're good. Sorry.
Oh, no. I didn't want to be up right here.
Please turn everybody ready. Ready, one, two, three. One, one, two, three.
Now, just one last thing. I won't take much more time. We still have some T-shirts to sell. So we will have more money coming your way as soon as we sell the rest of those T-shirts. And I just wanted to let you know that we're still working on that effort, so you will have some money in the future. Okay? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And where are those T-shirts located? If anyone wanted to buy one?
Oh, thank you. Why didn't you wear your T-shirt tonight? I know you have one.
I had to wear this one.
But right now, we do still have some T-shirts. I didn't bring any tonight. I didn't think it was appropriate. But we do have some T-shirts at my office, which is Barrett Health Centers, and it's on Riverstone Boulevard. Dr. Rick Barrett, you're welcome to call me. Call my office, and I can arrange for you to have a T-shirt if you would like. Okay? Thank you.
All right. I'll ask Jasden to get us some T-shirts if we can buy T-shirts. You know, while Dr. Barrett's walking away, I just want to say that, as he's here tonight, during Harvey, Dr. Barrett and his wife came up to the police station where we were at the EOC and did adjustments for anybody up there that had been sitting or standing very long. So we haven't really had an opportunity to thank you personally for coming up there and taking care of our people, police officers, EOC people, and doing a little adjustment helped. So thank you. All right. Let's see. Public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address counsel on any issue that's not an agenda item. And I didn't have anyone sign up for that. I had an agenda item speak, but didn't see one come forward. Item five, our staff report. City manager.
Mayor, thank you so very much. I hope everyone had a great weekend. We're doing a lot of exciting things at the City of Missouri City, and we just want to share a number of updates. One is, as you may well be aware, the city's finance department received another Transparency Star in the area of debt obligations. That's our second star this year. There are only two cities in the entire state that have all five stars, and our goal is within the next two years to have all five, to be the first in this region to have the five stars with the state. So we're very happy that we were able to do that, and it will be our second Transparency Star recognition. We had some discussions at the special meeting about Metro launching on Monday, the 27th. We have a meeting with them tomorrow to iron out a number of things that we need to reconcile before that official launch. But we want to thank the communications team, who've worked with their communications team, to create the wrap for the connector that would be visible throughout our community. I would like the community to mark their calendar for a number of upcoming events. The annual back-to-school health fair and backpack giveaway in partnership with Fort Bend County, as well as Access Health, will be Saturday, August 11, beginning at 9:00 a.m. The event will be held right down the street at the Fort Bend County Annex, which is 307 Texas Parkway, and be a great opportunity for families to come out and receive free backpacks, vision and dental screenings, speech and language screening, as well as haircuts and more. So we want the community to be aware of that. We also have on August 16, Doing Business with the City Leadership Luncheon. That's Thursday, August 16, at 11:30 a.m., and that will be here at our community center. This event will feature a number of special presentations on the steps necessary for building a business relationship with the city and more. Interested individuals, as well as businesses, are encouraged to register online via our city website. The Animal Shelter Open House is scheduled for Saturday, August 25, from 10 a.m. to noon. We're very excited about our new manager in the shelter doing a wonderful job, and we also have a number of enhancements. And we wanted to do this open house to invite the community to see what we're doing with regards to the animal shelter. A few roadway updates to be aware while traveling in the area. Today, our city's contractor closed Kirkwood Drive and Adams Street intersection to all traffic. It is anticipated that this intersection will be closed for 30 days, so traffic control devices and detour routes are set up for that area. Also, Court Road between Moore Road and Staffordshire Road is still closed as part of the Independence Boulevard Segment 1 construction. And we're anticipating that the road will be out of service until the end of 2018, with an anticipated opening in January of 2019. But on a good note, as you may recall, we sent out a press release regarding the Glen Lakes Bridge over Oyster Creek. We had that ribbon cutting, and it was held on Monday, July 30, and had a tremendous amount of turnout, and we're glad that a number of council members attended as well. That was a partnership with Fort Bend County, as well as the Quell Valley Fund. Just a number of other highlights in our community, and I think it's important to really highlight public-private partnerships, as well as community partnerships. We had a grand opening at the Texas Beer Garden. It's a new restaurant on 6302 Highway 6, and want to welcome them and thank them for being part of the Show Me City. The Girl Scouts Troop 19275 for filming an Adopt, Don't Shop PSA is part of their Silver Award at the animal shelter to raise community awareness about increasing adoptions, as well as the Girl Scouts Troop 19283 for planting prairie seed balls along the lake at Buffalo Run Park as part of their Silver Award project. We're very happy that Marshall High School invited staff to participate in the party on the Run event this past Saturday. It was a tremendous success. And our employee recognition committee did an outstanding job in hosting their inaugural Employee Family Day. And although it rained very heavily this past Saturday, we still had a good turnout of folks. We even were able to see Michael Jackson reappear and dance at the Quell Valley Golf Course. So the police team for visiting the summer day camp at Quell Valley Elementary Schools to share information about patrol vehicles, as well as Detective Michael Medina for speaking about fraud investigations. Our fire and rescue services for visiting Unique Minds Montessori School to educate students on fire safety. And then Scott Elmer for presenting at the Fort Bend Chamber recently on our Hurricane Harvey response. We're so happy of all the partnerships that we have. Our Parks Department is doing a great job, all during the month of Parks and Recreation Month. We also encourage our citizens to go online. We shared our 2018 citizen survey results that was sent out on July 26, so we encourage you to find out the feedback that we received related to our citizens. That will conclude my report. Mayor, I want to thank you and the council for your continued support of staff.
Very good. All right, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just like to give you a brief update on a meeting that we recently had with the mayor as it relates to some things we've been doing since Harvey. As we get into August, we know that this marks the hurricane season, and there are a lot of things that we were preparing for last year and since Harvey we started to do. And among those are reach out to community partners. The American Red Cross is a community partner that we really want to firm up and upshore our relationship. So with that, last week, we had a meeting with the new CEO, Van D Pew. He lives right here in the area. I think he lives right down the street, right on the border of Missouri City and Sugarland. And so he wanted to come over and meet everybody locally, let us know that he's here. He's here to bond relationships, make his presence known, and help us. From that, he wants to start some recruiting in our area for people who actually live in Missouri City, who can be Red Cross volunteers. If you remember, last year, it took us a little time to stand up those shelters, and partly that's because we're getting volunteers to come from other places. We didn't have some people locally entrenched as a Red Cross volunteer. So we'll be working with our emergency manager through the Red Cross to start some recruiting. There's some other things. There's some monies available for other programs, such as recruitment of volunteers and smoke detectors. Matter of fact, they gave out over almost 1,000 smoke detectors last year through another entity. So they wanted to come and share some of that with us. So those are some of the things they'll be doing. They'll be facilitating some CERT training, as well as some other training here in Missouri City. So we just want to let you know, be on the lookout. It's going to be coming up, not only through public service announcements, but through our website. And Mayor, I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted to comment on.
No, I just want to thank him for reaching out to us to volunteer all these services. And one of the things that we talked about was, we weren't short of asking for things. We asked for 350 smoke detectors, and they didn't even blink. And in particular, to go over Fifth Street, which is a real concern of ours for everything else, where you've got all those wood-framed houses, to go over there and go door-to-door and install those smoke detectors in that area of the city, but all over the city, but in those in particular, because, one, we know that it's a disadvantaged area, but, two, I get a little concerned that those wood-framed houses over, if one of them caught on fire, all of them probably would, and I doubt very seriously that they've even thought about smoke detectors. Now, one thing that I will say, the new smoke detectors that the Red Cross is furnishing us has a 10-year battery, 10-year life. You don't have to change the battery out like the old ones did, you know, when the time changed, everybody was supposed to change out the batteries. These last 10 years, you throw them away and replace them, you don't even put any battery in it. So I'm very excited about that part, because I think generally, we've got, what, 30, 40 maybe, that we distribute?
A year.
A year. And we're going to get, we've asked for 350 from them in this first initial, and like I said, they didn't even question it. They said, "You bet. You need more than that, we'll get them." So thank you for being there. I know the fire marshal was there, and Dakota was there. So I think it's a great partnership, and we're going to work with them. I know we've had the Police and Fire Auxiliary. That's a good place for us to start to find these Red Cross volunteers that can get certified at their own call, right here in our community, so that if we do have a disaster of any kind, they have a work list. They do all the work. They call them, they train them, and all we do is make sure we've got people. So we're going to go through that recruiting period and try to get some volunteers. And I know we do. I know we've got people out there that are willing. They came to us during Harvey.
Yes, sir.
They brought food, they brought boats, they brought themselves. So I know they're out there. They just need to get on a list so that we know who they are. So Chief, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Item six is a consent agenda. As I know we need to, I'd like to remove item B for report.
Item B, yes.
If I get a, huh?
Item B.
Yeah, item B. If I get a...
So moved.
For approval of A and C.
Second.
Council Wyatt made the motion. Council Boni made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. All right, item 6B, consider accepting the quarterly investment report.
Mayor, we're going to ask our consultant to come up with our CFO. We're very fortunate to have a dynamic team that really is checking and looking at the resources that we are entrusted to monitor. And we believe that the investment portfolio report is of good news, and our chair asked that the consultant share where we are in managing the portfolio for the city.
Very good.
Hi, Mayor and council. I want to introduce to you Susan Anderson. She is our investment advisor, working with Valley View Consultants. And tonight, she's going to go over the quarterly investment report as of June 30.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Again, Susan Anderson with Valley View Consulting, your investment advisor under contract, here for the June 30 report, which is not only your quarter end, but your fiscal year end, the first fiscal year end. You'll have another one in three months. One of the things we do each quarter is we meet with the finance committee of the council and go through in detail all of the aspects of the investment program, the strategy, the report of income, et cetera, over time. Since this is the annual report, we're coming before the full council, just to give a recap of what happened during the quarter and the year. The first page of your report is an overview year-over-year. You ended up the year at $83.9 million, which is almost the same number that you ended up this time last year. You're about $500,000 above where you were last year. So that is good for the city. We do a very detailed cash flow analysis for the committee and staff. We've gone back all the way to 2013. Since 2015, you have been on a very strong and steady increase in the portfolio over time. So you're in a good place, and we've been able to really maximize the earnings safely of the portfolio. You can see that the fourth-quarter year-end yield was 2.09%. And if you look over to see where we were this time last year, 1.52. So we're, you know, almost 60 basis points, a little over 60 basis points higher than we were last year. The fiscal year-to-date interest income was 1.63 during this fiscal year. It was 1.1 last fiscal year. So again, $500,000 higher this year than last. That's the annual recap. On page two, we're starting with the fiscal year, the quarter information. This particular quarter is one of your spin-down quarters. The uniqueness about governments is that they collect the bulk of their revenues with tax proceeds, comes in late calendar year, early calendar year, and then the rest of the year you spin down. And that's just the normal, it's like a sawtooth pattern. So right now, you're in the spending mode. You spent about $16.4 million. That's really pretty much in line with what you normally spend during this quarter. The average yield of 2.09, which I already pointed out, this time last quarter was 1.88. So you've had an increase of 21 basis points just in the quarter. The quarter income, interest income, was almost $567,000 just in this one quarter. So that brought you up to 1.632. Now, if you look over to page three, I'll just give you a very basic economic overview. I did hand out our market outlook, which is hot off the press. We create that once a quarter, once a month, and staff gets that. It's where we look at certain aspects of the economy. We talk about where the trends are, what we're seeing going on in the economy. And that translates to you over on the page three. A lot of graphs on here. The one I typically focus on is the upper-left-hand graph. This shows the yield curve, what's going on with interest rates over time. The very bottom line on that curve chart is in red, if you've got a color print. And that's where we were this time last year in terms of interest rate. So you can see that the blue line, being where we are now, has shown that we've had a very good rise in interest income, in the interest rate. Now, one thing I would point out to you that we're having a little bit of heartburn about is that that blue line, rather than being a nice upwardly sloped curve, meaning that the economy is getting strong and stronger and growing, we're seeing flattening. And the flattening occurs when the market is jittery and the market is nervous. And right now, the market is very nervous about the impact of tariffs. So the market, day-to-day, has little swings back and forth as the tariff and the possible trade war ratchets up. That's the big dark cloud on the horizon as far as what your portfolio is. We're very safely invested. Short-term rates continue to go up. There's about a 96% probability that the Fed will increase the Fed Funds Rate in September again, which will automatically make your rates go up for everything that you have in liquidity. But if some of those tariffs play out and the damage that it could do to the economy, should it ratchet up, that's where you have to worry about, you know, what the short-term rates are going to do. Right now, you're very well-placed. You've got, we have a laddered strategy approach where we look at your cash flows, we determine when you need to have maturities, and we buy a security or a CD to match that cash flow need. And we've built a ladder over time to address each of those cash flows. That's really where you want to be. You don't want to have to call day-to-day what interest rates are going to do. You match your cash flow needs, you lock in those rates, and you're in good shape if you do that. So that's just a little bit of market overview. You've got more detail in the piece there. Page four, as a governing body member, this is the most important page for you to pay attention to. This is the list of all the securities that you own in your portfolio. We've got it divided out into two components, your pooled portfolio and your mortgage portfolio. The mortgages you've had on the books for many years, they have been a very high-yielding investment for you. As interest rates start to creep up, we're starting to kind of pare that position down a little bit. But if you look at the listing, everything in the pooled funds portfolio above that blank row is your cash equivalent. That's the day-to-day money that you have to pay your bills. It's a little bit heavier than we would normally have. The reason that it is so heavy is because we've been able to find some very good yielding money market accounts for you. Keeps your powder dry, keeps your powder working at a rate that's about the equivalent to at least a three- or four-month CD, and it's earning a higher rate. Every time the Fed raises the rates, that number automatically goes up. So you've got one money market position that's currently earning a 220. If the Fed goes up another 25 basis points in September, that's going to go up 25 basis points as well. So it gives you a good method of flexibility in the portfolio to, if we see interest rates changing, we can go out and take that money and buy investments to lock in the rates. Page five is just our graphic overview. The pie chart shows your allocation. You've got about 60% in CDs and securities. The rest is in the cash equivalents that we just talked about. The total portfolio, the columns there show the change in the portfolio month-to-month. And you can kind of see that sawtooth pattern that I was talking about there. You get your money one time of the year, and you spend it down. The portfolio performance graph is at the bottom. Yours is the black line that's up above everything else. Everything else are the benchmarks that we track your portfolio against. And then finally, on page six, this is the portfolio, and it shows the buys and sells during this particular quarter. You had four CD positions that were purchased, about $24 million worth, and they were invested at CD yields anywhere from 253 to 282. We did sell two of those mortgage positions that I mentioned. The time was right for that. They were starting to slip a little bit in terms of their market yield. We were able to buy CDs to replicate the yield that we sold. So it really made more sense in the portfolio now that interest rates are going up to pull that back. So that was a real fast recap of the report. Like I said, we go through much more detail with the finance committee. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Any comments on the finance committee?
Well, I'd just like to thank Susan for doing this. And this is so important that we hear this. One of the things that I didn't want to do is that the other two members of the finance committee are out of town, are out of the country. And I thought it was more appropriate to bring this report to the full council so they could hear the report. There's a lot of good news in this report and how the city is managing the citizens' assets. And the one that I really liked the best is that our position last year is pretty much our position this year, based on the fact that we've spent our money, but we're still coming out on the positive side. And that's just good management, and thanks you for your help in helping us to manage the city's money.
Thank you.
Very good. Is that your motion?
So moved.
To approve B. And a motion by Council Wyatt. Is there a second? Approve B.
Oh.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, you can't turn down that kind of report.
That's a good report.
All right, item seven, the public hearing related to Act 7A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, granting a specific use permit authorizing the use of a 0.06 of an acre tract of land in the City of Missouri City as a specific use towers, describing said 0.06 of an acre tract of land, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. What's coming around right now are the applicant's presentation. And so I'm going to allow them, if council will give them time, to go over an overview. And it's pretty comprehensive, so I'm not going to do an intro to it, other than staff in planning and zoning does forward a positive recommendation for this tower site location off of Turtle Creek in the Thunderbird North Community Park that's off of Turtle Creek. And within the applicant's presentation, there's the details on the cladding of the tower. The height of the tower would be 120 feet tall, and the applicant has complied with all of Section 15B, the requirements for a tower, and for consideration of an SUP, and have identified a maintenance entity for the proposed cladding of the tower. And so if council would like to hear from the applicant, they can run through the presentation that you have before you.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bev Francis, 112 East Pecan in San Antonio. I'm the attorney for Skyway Towers and National Developer Telecommunications Facilities. First of all, I want to thank Jennifer. She has just been an amazing pleasure to work with, so thorough to make sure that we are presenting to you the absolute best application to meet your code requirements. Also, I'd like to thank your P and Z for the questions and the thorough discussion and their positive recommendation. This evening, Scott Mahoneyak is with us. Scott is president and COO of Skyway Towers. Additionally, Ms. Susan Soto, who is board president of Thunderbird North Community Association, is here. Also, Mr. Bill Smith, vice president, board vice president of the community association. Finally, Mayor and members of city council, Paul Williams will address you momentarily. He is the radio frequency engineer for T-Mobile, who will explain to you why this tower is so critical. so critical to resolve a significant gap in the wireless service. Well, the reason that there is a gap is frankly, as you certainly know, your city is growing. It's continuing to bring in new residents, new businesses. And as noted recently in your Community Impact, uh, newspaper, you're setting goals. You're trying to move forward on, how do we continue this business development, new residents? And Mayor, as you indicated in your State the City address and quoted that the city continues to grow. But with that creates a significant demand for wireless, not only for the current residents, but also these new businesses and residents that are coming. With now, for the first time, it's reported that 1.2 devices exist for every man, woman, and child in the United States. There are more wireless devices than residents in the United States. This is a graph, just being a visual person, is a 2018 Pew Institute study graph, just showing the dramatic increase in our acquisition and need for cell phones, up to like 95% of U.S. adults. And over 77% of us now have smartphones. But with that, your residents are requiring the wireless connectivity. Studies are showing that your residents have a minimum of five wireless devices. If you think about your households, think about the number of smartphones, cell phones, routers, hotspots, security systems that you have, and you overlay that with over 50% of your residents have cut the cord. They're totally wireless-dependent. On top of that, the new residents coming in, the next generation, the keeping your community vibrant and the, the current residents are demanding the Internet of Things. That is what we constantly see. You've got your smart, uh, security systems, you have your smart refrigerators, you have, um, smart utility meters. And those are all wirelessly dependent. And then, as you've probably seen on television, they're already starting to advertise wireless medical devices, portable EKG that are literally opened by an app on your phone and send and record EKG that you can forward to the hospital or the doctor. And another example you see on television are the, uh, diabetes glucose monitoring devices. But critical in recognizing what the chief said, E911 service is so incredibly important, as you certainly know. Over 85 to 90% of E911 calls are now placed by wireless devices. And as you certainly know, as residents of this area, we all depend on the reverse E911 alerts, wake you up in the middle of the night, a flood, a man-made disaster, a pending catastrophe. If you don't have the wireless connectivity, you don't have the safety and security of that system. Your city's way ahead of the curve, getting, uh, your residents connected with you to receive the emergency alerts. You have, uh, you know, asked your citizens to be connected. You're, you're directing them how to be connected through your, your various applications. And we all learned from about a year ago, across the country now recognizing cities and counties, social media pages are no longer just about, they're about Fourth of July parades and special events. In situations such as you faced and Florida faced and the East Coast faced and California with the wildfires, people are resorting to contacting the city, sending information, having that direct dialogue through social media, Facebook and various applications. You are, you know, requesting and identifying for your citizens, all your platforms, so they'll be ready. Also, your independent school district is taking it extremely seriously, as they should, and they should receive very big, strong applause on this. They're seeking parents, get connected with us, not only just to keep up with their grades, but critically, you see on the number one topic, get connected with us so you can receive alerts, emergency situations. We want to connect with you. Also, I think the second bullet point is great. We will alert you if your child is absent. You may have sent the child off, but you need to be alerted if the child is reported absent. And they're also requesting and giving the, the parents platforms in which to stay connected. Now, in your package is the survey and site plan, and as the staff report really laid it out extremely well. The site is located on the community association property, placed so that it doesn't interfere with the recreational facilities, the tennis court and swimming pool. But as you're familiar with that site, it has a massive floodway to the west. And the site has to be out of the floodway. The tower compound is a 48 by 48 compound. It is on a 50 by 50 lease area, and it has enough space to handle a total of four wireless components. So T-Mobile and three additional wireless carriers will be available, this pole will, uh, excuse me, tower will be available. The tower elevation, it is a proposed monopine. Uh, we're excited to work directly with staff in designing it. Uh, staff has been, Jennifer and her team has been very diligent in making sure that they go the extra mile and the actual staff of the tower will be clad in a material to simulate bark. Very unusual, but that was very creative and proactive by your staff. Above, the rest of the bark above will be painted a matching brown color, so it'll look like a continuous, uh, monopine. The fence is, working again with staff, will be an eight-foot board-on-board fence that matches your code requirements for fencing. We have provided staff, and in your package is the co-location letter, where Skyway commits to work directly with the other carriers to seek co-location opportunities. And as we go through the site overall area, you'll see why that is so critical. Leading up to that, just want to refresh you on the zoning for this area. The overall zoning, as you see, the yellow is R1. So the area that Paul Williams will discuss with you that needs to have the wireless service improved is predominantly three districts, actually four, but three predominantly. You've got your R1, R2, and CF, which is basically the golf course, uh, and the Lantern Lanes Elementary. To the east, you have your park facility, which is your gray and, and pinkish area. Scott Mahoneyak and the Skyway team, uh, if you can see this very clearly, it's in, uh, one of the slides for you in your PowerPoint, is, you'll see a red circle. That is what's called the search ring that Paul Williams will discuss with you. That's the area that optimally this tower should be located in to resolve this gap. But as you can see from the map, it's all residential. It is, and Lantern Elementary, uh, which was not interested in the tower facility. So in working with T-Mobile, Skyway was able to inch or move the tower to the northeast of the search ring to the only available site, which is this community center. Photo simulations are in your package. This is the overall, uh, you know, map of where the photos were taken. This is the shot directly into the compound, so you can see the existing trees and the wooden board-on-board fence that will match your code requirements. This is southeast, looking back to the 120-foot monopine. This, I mean southwest, excuse me. This is, uh, northwest, looking back. This is southeast, looking back towards the monopine. And this is north, uh, excuse me, I'm, I'm getting wrong. This is Southern Hills, looking directly in to the monopine, excuse me, that was one ahead. This is, uh, southeast, looking back. Now, I'm sure in working with your city attorney, she has worked with you all to discuss, uh, the parameters that have been placed by the, uh, telecommunications act, that not to be taken into consideration, uh, radio frequency emissions. But I always find it helpful because we do get questions. And wanted to provide you just with some assurances and backup from the leading institutions. The World Health Organization has thoroughly vetted the effects of radio frequency, and they say there's no adverse health effects. And this is one I find most interesting, not only because of the credentials of this gentleman, but also the institution. This is, uh, India's telecom secretary and former health communication specialist with John Hopkins University, one of the premier health universities in the world, if not the country. States that cell towers emit less radiation than sunlight and are absolutely safe. American Cancer Society and USDA have also, through extensive research, said there's no increased health risk. So Mayor, members of the council, we really appreciate the opportunity to have presented this to Planning and Zoning Commission and received their positive recommendation. We thank staff again for working through the design with us and ensuring that this is the absolute best application. Also, we believe that once you receive Paul Williams' testimony, we might meet the requirements of federal telecommunications, because Paul will show, law that Paul will show there's a significant gap in wireless service, how this tower will resolve it, and this is the least, uh, there's the only available site within the area that will resolve the gap. So with that, Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to have Paul do a short presentation for you.
Before you leave the podium, um, is it correct you said that three other towers are proposed for this area?
No.
Because I see here it says future carrier, three.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's on the, on the tower.
That's on the tower?
Yes, sir.
So no three, no, no other poles?
No, sir. That's the benefit of this, it will have three additional, and you can see from the alternative side of the layout, there's no other space that will have, resolve it. They are experiencing the similar gap in service. So it'll be able to accommodate a total of four, T-Mobile and three more.
But, but no other antennas, just that one antenna?
That one, the tower, but it'll have T-Mobile and then available for ATD Verizon and Sprint to co-locate on that tower in the monopine, which will cut down the need for three additional towers.
I had a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I noticed on the site analysis, you mentioned that it needed to be placed in the red circle.
Yes, ma'am.
But you couldn't find a location. So with it being placed outside to the northeast of the red circle, is it still going to meet the gap?
Yes, ma'am, and that's what Paul will be able to explain. Great question. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Where was this pine tree-looking thing the last time you were here?
Yeah, this looks totally different.
That ugly one up there. Remember, that's what I wanted when you brought the last one.
You did a, you did a good job this time.
Uh, good evening. My name's Paul Williams. I'm the senior manager of RF Engineering for T-Mobile in the Houston market. There are two main reasons why T-Mobile desires to build a cell site in any given area. I'll get back to where I need to be here. The first reason I'm going to illustrate by use of the maps that you can see on the screen, um, what these depict are the signal strength in the area where green shows the areas where there is likely in-building coverage. The yellow area, depending on the type of structure the building has, it may or may not be in-building coverage. And in the red areas, you can see that that typically is in vehicle coverage, but most likely not in building coverage in, in those red areas. Uh, the icons or the symbols that you can see on, on the map there show the, uh, T-Mobile cell sites in the surrounding area, with the site that we're proposing here in the center indicated by the arrow. What you see on this slide is the impact that building the new tower would have on the coverage in the area. So this is before, this is after. So you can see a significant amount of green, in other words, in-building coverage being introduced by the new tower. This, again, this is after, before, and after. So that's coverage. That's one of the reasons that any carrier typically wants to build a new cell site in a given area. For T-Mobile and this particular cell site, the primary reason that we want to build in this area is because of the growth in the area. Our subscribers in the area are increasing, and they are using an increasing amount of voice and in particular, data services. What you can see on this map are the number of 911 calls that each one of these towers carried in a 30-day timeframe. As far as capacity, T-Mobile has a, um, a set of guidelines, engineering guidelines that we use in order to determine when new capacity needs to be built into the network in any given area. In this area, um, we are forecasting that our engineering dimensioning guidelines will be exceeded by Q1 of next year. What that will mean is, if we're not able to install a new cell site in this area, uh, our subscribers will start to see slow data connection, um, data access fails, voice access fails, voice drops, and this is all in increasing level of severity. And then even to the point where if we're not able to address the capacity issue, maybe even E911, uh, call failures. So that's, um, a brief description of why T-Mobile desires to install a new cell site in this area, in particular, at this location.
Are you on the tower by, uh, school on the, here on Texas Parkway?
Um, I, yes, I think that, uh, straight north of this location. I think that is, that's a high school, right? Yeah, I think we're on that side.
Yeah, you're on that tower?
Yep.
Are you on the tower we just approved in Coyle Valley?
I don't know for sure.
Cypress Point?
I don't know for sure. I would have to check that one.
Your lawyer may know. He brought that one.
Uh, yes, sir. That was, excuse me, Bev Francis again in December, when I appeared before you. Uh, that's the one on the synagogue, is that correct?
No.
No, I wouldn't, then I didn't handle the other one. Uh, replacement of a light picture, I believe.
Huh? Yeah.
Replacement of a, a school light picture, is that what it was? Stadium light, I'm sorry.
Tower that went into Coyle Valley.
It's, it's not on here. It, it's not shown on this coverage map. It's not shown on the coverage map.
He did the one on Williamsburg.
Yeah. Right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, um, one more, um, I think important, uh, discussion. I'd like to ask Ms. Soto, the president of the board of the community association, to address you and, uh, discuss, uh, the presentation to the board members.
Mayor. Mayor, council, city leaders. I was on the board when this proposal was considered, but I was not the president. So I was present for all of these different outreaches that we made. We reached out to our neighborhood homeowners and residents three separate times, um, once by email, once by paper ballot, and then we had a community meeting at our community pool. After all of that, information was disseminated, the vote was taken. Um, the measure to move forward with the proposal to have a cell tower on our common property passed by 77%.
All right.
We did keep the paper ballots archived in our paperwork.
I have number six.
In case there are any questions.
Mark assessment report.
But the measure did pass by those residents who voted. And on a personal note, I live on Southern Hills. I have very poor service. My carrier is T-Mobile. And I personally have had to run outside to the backyard in order to continue a cell phone call. So I personally support the measure as well as, as the board, as the elected board of Director of Thunderbird North.
How many residents voted?
The total was 72 residents.
How many switch users?
582.
And there's your way of getting revenue off of the ballot, right?
Correct.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing. That will help us.
It's a good thing.
What was some of the opposition for those that voted against it? Did, did they express or share any thoughts?
There was not any thought expressed on the actual ballot when we were talking.
I'm talking about in the meetings that you got.
Yes, in the meetings, they were concerned about the health hazards, um, which, as we're becoming more and more wireless, I, I think we're learning more and more about that. And as the presentation showed, it isn't such a concern. Um, and that was the only concern that they had.
She's coming to fix it for you.
A very tall pine tree, as always.
You don't have to answer this, but I'll ask you guys, what is that material made out of? This pine tree?
What's the lifespan of it?
What is the lifespan of that and who's going to maintain it when the?
Thank you. Those are great questions. The P and Z asked similar questions. Let me go reverse order. Skyway Towers has committed, and it's in the package, will maintain the tower. I'd like to introduce Scott Mahoneyak, who is the president and COO of Skyway, so you can discuss the materials. I believe they built 50 of these monopines, and he can describe the barking and also the leak, I mean, the branch material.
So, my name's Scott Mahoneyak, I live at 1915 Forestview Drive, Tampa, Florida. Sorry.
Well, you want to just give us the?
So the material on the, so they're, they're adding on the side of the tower.
Yes, it is.
The bark is a, kind of a composite rubberized material. Then when you get to the branch level, it's a.
Yeah, go down there. Last time, when Karen was here, she talked a little bit about the process and, and the purpose for doing this. Now that the report is complete, we thought it would be prudent to come back and, and give you guys kind of the 30,000-foot level of some of the major areas within the park system that we really need to be looking out for and.
So the question that was posed at.
Planning for, because we have some areas that, that really need some attention. So they basically looked at everything we have, all of our assets.
At which point my response is, well, I expect code enforcement will probably send me a, a letter to come in here.
The report, the thing you see on the table is, is the report, and so there's a lot of, a lot of data in there, and.
Typically, the branches last anywhere from 15 to 20 years. But when the carriers come in to add equipment to the tower, sometimes we have to wind up replacing branches as they, they go up there just from normal wear and tear, and it's not an uncommon thing, so.
Not very heavy, are they? Will they fall?
No, they're secured into the tower itself.
Some of this is reiteration of what you saw before, but I thought it was still relevant, especially with the members and.
Raleigh, I've Char, actually, I've got one in Charleston, South Carolina, that took that hurricane last year, and we didn't even lose a branch off the tree.
To do a detailed analysis of existing condition by means of site.
And you are going to maintain it.
Yes, I am.
Photograph and then spreadsheet that you can find.
Yep.
We touched on facilities, restroom buildings, if they were not air-conditioned.
Motion.
And these are the parks.
I second the motion, but I also want to commend Sunset North HOA for collaborating and helping to make this happen. I think it's very positive that you speak for your residents. I'm glad to see that you're going to get some income from it.
But I put it aside so you can leave a lot of information.
And it helps HOA interns also help to save photos so that they can go back and see everything
as it was at the time that we did the report.
Motion on the second, I was in favor.
I will tell you that a lot of municipalities came back and redo the report five years later.
That was easy this time, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
The evidence of what they accomplished, but other things that they have.
Well, and if I may speak openly, that goes to Ms. Fred the Jennifer. She saw it as an option.
From those.
It was very innovative, so hats off to her, and again, nice to see you all, and thank you for your support.
But in the report, this gives a line-by-line itemization and priority.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of approximately 24.45 acres of land from LC3 Retail District to PD Plan Development District Number 106, describing said 24.45 acres of land, regulating and restricting the development and use of the property within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject. And as a reminder, there's a public hearing required.
It's kind of hard to do, I mean, unless, unless you don't do anything to maintain it and let rust and things of those nature.
So this is a proposal for about 24, 25 acres of land off of Highway 6, north of Lake Olympia Oil Field Road, south of Glen Lakes. There's a Murphy Express gas station next to it. We drive by it all the time. So it is, the applicant has proposed to rezone this property from LC3, which is our commercial retail district, to a plan development district. And so I'm going to kind of walk through the overview of the components of this plan development district, staff and P&amp;Z's recommendations that's being forwarded to you.
Call, American Legion.
So the applicant originally proposed a mixed-use development. You have background materials in your packet, the master plan that was provided. Breaking it down, the applicant's original proposal was to do this into Phase, Phase One being residential. Age-restricted condominiums are what's shown to the left, in the image to the left.
We're going to be placing copies of this report on the website?
Roughly five stories, they're being in height for this building. And then to the right are single-family townhomes, attached townhomes that are being proposed.
Are they age-restricted?
No, just the condominiums.
Okay.
The second phase would consist of commercial retail development, and the applicant has proposed a courtyard, a kind of commercial retail effect, to provide for some common areas, open areas, patios, to have like a series of restaurants and a different retail to kind of take advantage of different views within this area. This commercial area would be pushed back to the rear as shown in the Phase Two, the red box shown here. There's a detention, drainage detention facility that is, that comes between, is adjacent to this site and separates it from Colonial Lakes, or Colony Lakes subdivision. And so they are, the applicant is looking to design this development in order to take advantage of water features and some other characteristics of the land. Phase One is shown in the yellow highlight, including the commercial area. And then the front edge would generally consist of commercial retail uses.
What I would think would be helpful for the group as a whole, if we could maybe get maybe just a link email to this.
So the recommendations that are included in the ordinance that is before you are to approve this mix of uses.
We got a paper copy there, but I know it's always easier if you're at your leisure sitting somewhere on your property today.
To allow for age-restricted, restricted to 55-years-plus condominiums.
What the priorities are.
And to allow for single-family townhomes.
You'll ask the appropriate questions.
And that would include attached and detached townhomes in that proposal.
Once you've kind of digested.
What's on the site plan are shown as attached townhomes.
You know, one or two hours kind of meeting.
Also included would be to apply the LC3 Retail District standards in terms of height and area regulations to all of the non-residential uses, and that's, you know, no limit on the height, so you can go as tall. They're relatively looking at two stories plus buildings. The tallest buildings would be the condominiums, and the recommendation, which is on the next slide, for the condominiums are to also apply the LC3 standards to that, to allow for the height, allow them to get to the height for those condominiums.
No matter what, I mean, even if, you know, we got everything working in line.
For the residential uses, it would relax the front yard, rear yard, side yard, lot width, and lot area standards. And as you saw on the overall site plan, it's not, they're not going to sell off individual lots.
They're very in tune with these parts and what's going on.
They'll sell off the space, so townhomes would essentially be designed as townhomes, but would function, similar to a condominium kind of setup.
Feedback, I think, will be critical.
Where property owners would buy the space and not the land. The land would be common, common space, owned and maintained. I'm sorry.
That's why you call them condominiums.
Well, the, the townhomes too. The townhomes too, they, they wouldn't be buying individual plots of land. They would be buying the space within the building, and then the common open areas would be maintained, maintained by everybody.
How many condos and how many townhomes, and what's the average price on them?
So I can't answer the average price. I'll let the applicant, if, you know, they want to kind of talk about what they're looking at in terms of projections. But in terms of the number, the condominiums are proposed into two buildings, as shown on the site plan.
Okay.
So the condominiums would be these two buildings, Building A and Building B. I don't know if you can see the cursor moving.
They do.
With a total of 168 units between the two buildings. And then they're proposing 42 single-family townhouse units.
Why are they eight? That tells a story.
It's, I'll let the applicant discuss their overall concept for it, but it goes into the concept of what they're trying to achieve with the development.
Some situations where we need to replace.
They have, they have a niche market that they're, they're seeking to.
But mainly it's our playgrounds and, and the fall surface.
And just as a reminder, the price is not a proper zoning consideration.
It adds up to a big number.
They can mention it, but it should not be.
And the neighborhood parks, capital and maintenance is over.
Okay, you went there. Let me, as the applicant walks up, staff and P&amp;Z were basically aligned in terms of follow the recommendations. However, there are, there is a gap in your ordinance that we need to fulfill with the recommendation, and that's on the development schedule. If council desires to mix up the uses within each phase, so instead of doing, Phase One is all residential, having essentially performance standards for the Phase One development and then the remainder of the development.
Yeah, what is capital based on Phase, on the threshold that we said, anything 5,000 or over.
In your ordinance, right now, and this is summarized, but for Phase One, what we need to provide, if council desires to move in this direction, is construction of a minimum number, square foot, of non-residential buildings to be done complimentary with the residential as opposed to all the residential going in and the commercial retail going in at a future date, or, you know, kind of up in the air. And so what P&amp;Z's recommendation was, was for staff to work with the applicant on numbers that would make sense, and then we would propose that. We don't have those numbers here for you tonight, and so if council desires to move in this direction, we'll continue the conversation with the applicant and then provide those numbers for you before the second reading.
Yeah, that's not really part of this, I mean, that's knowledge that Jason.
Do we have similar performance standards like that for other PDs?
We do, we applied this for PD 96, which is the PD, the mixed-use development along the toll road, west of the toll road, so, and to the east of where D.R. Ward is building Parks Edge. And that mixed-use PD, we do have this performance there.
Well, I'm thinking if we're going to invest and do maintenance now, do capital and maintenance now, I don't think we should be going and saying we want $3 million.
We are going to work diligently to do that.
I think that's very short-sighted of us to do. I think we should go in there and say, we need $3 million, and to keep it maintained, we're going to need X number of dollars in our budget every single year.
And that, that would be a separate component.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just state your name and address.
All right.
Okay.
And it's Mario Verugio, I'm partnered with the Stowe Architects, the design partner.
You'll get a firsthand experience.
When I first talked to Cece about this project.
Thank you very much.
We talked about the condominiums, we had talked about underground parking for the, for the condominiums, is that still in place?
It's, it's true, but it's a split level. We didn't want to go all the way down because we worry about being so close to, to the pond might get so filtration. But we maintain a minus four elevation, that, that will work almost like that. And we have a courtyard of some sort.
Right.
Where we can, we can be on top of that as a, as a terrace.
And you talked, and I know we talked about enhancing that ugly reservoir that's behind that property today with some jogging paths around it that would even connect to the jogging path that we have in, like Colony, I think, is that still in the plans?
And, and the idea is, is correct. The only thing is that, since we're building this thing in probably a couple of phases, we might not be able to complete the, the total loop.
Right.
But we will do a major effort in doing the part of the, the part of the.
Enhance that, like the holding pond that's behind it, I guess, is to teach him what it is. And then even talked about having some retail, actually restaurant-type stuff face the amenity in the back, is that still?
Right, it's correct. The, the idea, the idea here, could you go back to the master plan? Thank you. The ground floor plan? Okay. There you are, we are. All the things that we've been talking back and forth, we, we, we've been visiting with each other for the last two, three years.
Right.
Till we finally got the developer lineup to get this thing done. But the idea is that we want to do a, a total mixed-use development. It's not necessarily residential, and then we don't have any commercial. I think because of the mixed-use has to be a balance. So we want to do a first phase that will integrate also, let's say, 120 units of residential versus 120,000 square feet of, of, of commercial. So then we can start developing what is called the, the first phase of this thing. So we would have enough, we would have enough, enough retail on, developed right by, by, by the pond.
Right.
And we also have the townhouses facing also the pond, and then we will start with the, with the, with the, one of the buildings. Instead of doing all together as a first phase, the residential, we'll, we'll split that residential into, into a half and, and half for the second phase. But we definitely want to do retail, no question about that. Otherwise, there is a mixed balance. The, the retail doesn't work if we don't have residential. And residential doesn't work really if we don't have some amenities. So, so this is what a mixed-use does.
What do you see for retail? What are you all desiring for the retail?
Retail basically will be a ground floor, a general service retail, mainly commercial, you know. And then we have a second floor of offices, and then we have a, an area where we dedicate to the, to the food. But this food service on the ground floor could go on the back, could go also on the front. We don't necessarily say, this is the area where food has to go. It could basically go everywhere. And I think that what, I forgot that I have this thing here. I think what we want to do is, is this boulevard that we, that right now shows a splitting Phase One and Phase Two, it will become actually a, a building boulevard all the way up to, let's call it the pond, and then, and then it will, half will be giving access to, to the, to the residential, and then the other half will be giving to the commercial. And all that thing will be, the middle of the block will be basically the first phase. If we don't have impact on the first phase, we don't have it. It's very hard to, to get this thing going as a total development.
So why are you guys age-restricting the condos?
Why are we? I personally don't, but there's a lot of people that do. They, they, they sell their houses for a bunch of money, and they want to live, live in a place where they don't have to cut the grass.
Is there a certain percentage of the condos that are age-restricted, or all of them?
Well, they, they, basically, the way we're looking at the condos, I'm going to be honest with you, the market actually is telling us, okay, there is so many 55-year-old people that want to move in condos. But there also, there is a lot of people that, families, that are, you know, the average family that want to live in here, and that's why we, we, we providing this number of units for, as family units. I call it the regular town, townhomes units, don't necessarily apartments.
I guess, I guess my thing is, is that you kind of, you know, putting yourself out of the, the market of single people wanting condos, so that's why I was like, why are you age, younger single people rather, that need housing?
If I am not mistaken, that was a requirement.
Oh, was that a requirement?
By somebody in the, in the Homeowners Association, they decided that, hey, they don't, they don't want apartments, want condos.
Was that a requirement?
They want more of a residential type.
Okay.
But in the other hand, you're going to have a bunch of kids and bicycles on the townhouses, so I don't know what the big deal is. I'm with you.
Yeah, I mean, there's a younger market here of, you know, young professionals that they need this type of housing. That's why I was wondering why you would age-restrict it, I mean.
But that's why I want to increase. Personally, I want to increase the number of regular townhomes, if I may call them, and, and, and then have the, you know, 80 units of, of plus 55, it's not that many. They're not really that many for, for the, for the seniors. 55 is not seniors, goodness gracious, they're young people.
A good point being brought up. Are we requiring that the houses be 55 plus so he can do whatever he wants to do?
Yes. Yes, there's not a, there's not a city requirement.
I wish I could follow you, whatever I want to do.
No, you, I mean, I.
Whatever the market allows us to do.
Want it tied to the PD, so. Now, yeah, and right now with the proposal, it would be tied to the PD. See, and that would restrict them. That would, yeah. But there's not one going in saying that they. I mean, it's theirs, so, yeah, it's their choice, but I'm just saying.
Even if it's restricted, I don't mind that, because I think that if we have to share these with other people that will come to, to us as developers, to, we want to go and pursue this, this, this single path, not, not be all over.
And they're proposing to kind of, okay. So it could be applied to one. I mean, it's their choice, I'm just saying that I know there's a lot of young professionals that live here that need housing.
I'm with you.
After reviewing, taking a look at the city naming process, Mr. San Ten, you'll tell me off on this.
I have to tell you all the time that they wish they could move to Missouri City, but there's not a lot of housing options other than single-family standalone homes, and they don't want that, they want condos and a park.
It may fit under the city program portion, and if that's the case, the procedure. And if that's the case, uh, the procedure as outlined in, uh, section sixteen dash ninety-two is.
Okay, I, I have to go back to what we're doing now.
That the Parks and Recreation Department program application rename as afterwards shall be filed with the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. His designee on a form provided by the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. So basically, like y'all, to do is, um, I mean, we can submit this as individuals, but if we.
And then the, the condos themselves, they can go all the way up to three hundred and fifty dollars a square feet.
Ask Jason for this form.
That's why you may have a statement.
Fill it out with the, uh, required information, then bring it back to y'all next month or whenever we get that done.
Now, being at fifty-five, you probably have to, you already have made some money when you sold your house. That shouldn't be any problem.
Doesn't need to be from, from all of us, a non-council.
I have a question. On the two-story future development, what do you foresee those being, uh, the two-story, it's a couple of, uh, spaces here. We have two-story future.
Along the front end?
Yes, on the front end.
The highway six front end.
Is that for?
Effect behind it. They all submit together. And ironically, if it makes it through the process, it does come back to us for a recommendation to city council later on.
The owner of the land, which is actually the developer, I'm just, I'm just his favorite architect.
So that's what we're asking for, sort of y'all.
There you are. So then we, what we do is basically proposing that the same, the same vocabulary, the same material, the same concept, the same vernacular of what we're trying to develop in the, in the, in the commercial.
And then there were some other criterias in there that made it okay too.
Yeah, she fits, um, right now, uh, the naming criteria, six, two, three.
It is reflected also in these ones here.
Number five, a former employee of the city who has made an exceptional contribution to the city.
But they will be for sale.
And eventually, in the next year or two, she may fit criteria, number two, an individual who's been deceased for at least five years, who's made an exceptional contribution to the city as well. So, um, those are the criteria.
The phase two commercial, not the front.
Criteria five is the one we propose upon. Um, but depending how long the process takes, it may, she may satisfy the second criteria as well.
The only.
With the rainwater system.
Conversation that came from.
The bottom picture.
Oh, yes, there you are. Yeah, the bottom part.
No, it wasn't even legal. Y'all all took on this one. I wanna say maybe it came from, I don't know if it was communication, but there was some conversation had at one of our meetings and I need some help from, from everyone.
It was Corey.
Corey.
So, so do you foresee it being retail?
Oh, yeah. About junior of the year.
Yeah, and that they were trying to present more of a whole listing approach of, you know.
But then the, the second floor could be offices or could be retail.
Okay.
Or, or we sometimes.
The way I gather, no, I may be wrong, and that's what I'm asking for help.
And assign a space because it could very well be.
Is that the way it was presented?
We've seen all sorts of interesting things lately.
Them. Am I, am I stating that right or am I?
Pretty much.
Okay. I, I wanted to make sure I didn't.
But I think what, one of the things that we're looking for is that we can still have a volunteer of the year award in Missouri City. But the PD would provide unified standards throughout so that we keep the architectural standards, landscaping standards, all of that consistent for the entire development, regardless of who develops it.
For the next.
And to, and to add up to, to your comment, which is very good, I forgot actually, is that also, we, we hope that the condominiums are a, a way of treating the retail.
First came up and.
Not just, not just condominium, uh, apartments and townhouses. No, no. The retail also will become condominium because people, people, they will share on the cost of maintenance and common areas and all that kind of good stuff. So then they will be taking care more of, of that. And I, it's, 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 it's the latest already on, on, on the market.
For the next reading, can you guys bring samples of this product that is, that are, is located in other places if, if they have it?
Something comparable?
You, 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 you mentioned a couple of, you had a couple of pictures the, the other time that they were very good. You were describing it as the new urban.
I think it would be nice for the public to be able to see samples of this product in other places. Of course I've seen it, but, I mean.
Yeah, and what he's referring to, we, we talked to, um, PNC about the conference of plan. And so this character district is still part of our auto-oriented character district, which is still, um, where we have the minimum or maximum heights, minimum, uh, yard areas and things like that. But this kind of development is the opportunity for the city to use that urban district that's in the conference of plan that kind of flips, um, how we look at it today. And so some of the examples were from that.
I think there's a little bit of that.
The Kirby University Avenue, the retail section.
Oh, I'm fully aware. I just wanted to be able to show, you know, the public what, what, what this is. So, yeah. Yeah. Yes, yes.
He, he just mentioned the area I was gonna mention both. Uh, I move that we adopt.
Well, I have another question.
He had a question.
Well, we really should be answering our questions after a motion has been placed on the floor. And that's your motion? All right, there's been a motion now.
Second.
Yeah. Second. If you can discuss, all right, very good. But I do have someone that wants to speak too. Yes. Have questions.
Yeah, I wanted to know, uh, it has nothing to do directly with this project, but do you all have an appetite or are you open to urban revitalization areas for redevelopment, for aging areas, older areas?
Well, let me put it this way. I, I, I dedicated half of my life in, in, in working on these areas. Because I, as a architect, developer, master planner, I had to get into a lot of situations whereby I, I inherited an old building and what am I gonna do with it and how am I going to add to it? And usually adding the old parts of town that get refurbished and reinvented. And, yeah, I done a lot of those, but.
I believe we have to go to council.
They, they actually beautiful jobs.
We need to have a conversation.
I do have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very much. May I say to CC that you were pretty, how can I call it, looking forward, seeing us getting this thing going?
I have been for two years.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. I have Warren Newall. Warren, just, uh, when you come up, just speak your name and address and we've got it of record.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Warren. How, I use Howard. Howard Wa.
Okay.
I live at seventy-two thirty Bethany Bay Drive in the landing section of Colony Lakes. And I'm the president of our homeowners association.
Yes, sir.
First thing I would like to say is I'd like to thank Anthony Marulis, who unfortunately is not here this evening. For having brought us along with this project from early stages. I'm not here to question the project or complain about it or be for it or against it. I am here to ask a couple of questions. As background, homeowners associations are sometimes maligned for the way we are fussing about the appearance of homes, and we do that. Our job is to enhance value of the investment our homeowners have in their homes and lots. So we have architectural standards, we have landscaping standards, we have maintenance standards for our perimeter walls and our swimming pool and other infrastructure and for roads and streetlights in our gated section. There are a number of things that contribute to value where we do not have enforcement abilities and obviously, we don't, we don't operate police force or a fire department. So one of the things, and perhaps if, if I could trouble you, that your very first slide showed the orientation of our, the portion of our community which is facing the lake. And perhaps it was, there was one with, that showed the lake alongside the, the pond or the lake, which, uh, as you described it, we have twenty-three homes who are on a direct line of sight or sound, if you will, from this project. In the video, I did not attend the zoning commission. It was too late for me, past my bedtime. But I did review the video and one of the questions that was raised in that video was, would the sound of music from the restaurants, how would that affect the people living across the lake? And that is what I am here to address today. Of those twenty-three homes, some of which are front-facing and other which have their yards facing, well, we, in Colony Lakes, we've seen a lot of development recently. And there have been a number of beneficial developments and some that are not so beneficial. One of the beneficial developments, and nobody expected, was a significant reduction in incursions by feral hogs. So as the Matthews property has been developed and the church campus next to Elkins are developed, there's less property for hogs to run free and they do a lot less damage to my front yard anyway than they used to. On the other hand, one of the symptoms of development, and I see it here, is noise. Now, one man's noise is another man's church organ music. And my son and I have been dive buddies for thirty-five or forty years and we can never agree on what music should be playing on the boat. He likes techno. I like jazz. There's a mutual incomprehension. Of those twenty-three homeowners whom I have left information with and talked to some of them, there is an appreciation for music and the sounds of people enjoying themselves. But. Thank you.
Jennifer, uh, how, how far is it from where those buildings will start to the houses that are on the other side of the lake?
Well, from, from the side of the lake over the other side is a couple hundred yards total to people's front yards from where those restaurants are gonna be.
Okay.
But it's over water. Sound carries very well across water, as you know, Ms. Ford. So what my concern was is municide, section thirty-eight-one talks about noise. Houston's municide, section thirty-five talks about noise, but one of the things they specify is decibel levels. A decibel level of around forty-five is something that will keep you awake at night. The Texas, uh, Houston, uh, municide stipulates sixty-eight decibels during the day and fifty-eight at night, which would keep me awake probably. Our municide does not stipulate the number of decibels nor whether those are measured at the point of emanation or at the point of receipt. So I would, my question to you is, is how will the noise or the music or the soporific sounds or whatever, which will emanate from the restaurants on, with all due respect, the backside of this development, which is facing us, how will that be controlled so that people are not disturbed in the middle of the night by what might be a wonderful West End blues being played by Quentin Marsalis? But on the other hand, might be techno, punk, funk, rock, something which would keep people awake.
That's why we got those age-restricted units over there.
But they, they're not on that side.
Well, all the restaurants being inside the, the development, right? They're not gonna be outside or open.
Yeah, well, they, the, the point was made at the zoning comi.
They may have patios and like open.
And the zoning commission, one of the observations of a member of the zoning commission was what, in response to a question, was what would be the reaction of the people across the pond to the sound of music from the restaurant? And he said with a smile, he or she said with a smile, well, they would wanna come over and join us. So I'm not at all sure that that's true. So what I would like to understand is, uh, how will our municide be applied to the outdoor portions of this in such a fashion as that twenty-three homeowners and maybe others, but at least the twenty-three homeowners within direct sound of this are not gonna be kept awake at night?
We don't have a decibel level in the municide.
We do.
I thought we did.
We do. The caveat is, is it's industrial.
Oh, I was gonna say. I know we have it by my house.
It's, it's part of the performance standards of industrial.
It is still too loud, so don't worry.
But to be perfectly honest with you, most of us are willing to put up with an awful lot of noise coming from, for example, the church campus development over, because it's during construction. We know it's gonna stop.
Yeah.
But a, the House of Blues across the street from me might be insufferable. So that's the only thing I have. I have, I don't ask you for an answer and I would just like to be assured that during the development process, I can go back to those twenty-three homeowners and, and give some assurance of the kind of environment they're gonna be living in.
If I, if I may, if I.
What we need to do is, is that decibels are also measured in, in terms of foot and in terms of the distance. So you could be eighty-five here and two-hundred feet away, you may be something totally different. So maybe staff need to go back and look at that and come back on second reading.
If I may though, just let you know what the standard is, what we, how we would prosecute that type of case in court. It's a reasonable person standard. So it would be up to the prosecution to, to prove what would be unnecessary and unreasonable to a reasonable person.
And that's a very reasonable approach.
Yeah.
I would not like to suggest that any of our homeowners would ever be unreasonable.
Yeah, but I, I still think you have a very valid point.
Thank you.
And it needs to be addressed prior to development.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we've seen this in other places of the city that, you know, it wasn't necessarily addressed and people are kept up in the middle of the night because of certain types of noise. As for construction, we do have a, a time allotment that they are allowed to construct and they might violate it, but, you know, I've had to go out in my pajamas to stop them. But, but I, I agree with you. It does need to be addressed prior to development, so.
And I must be also honest with you. I've lived in a lot of different homeowners associations around the world, including one in Budak Columbia, which was devoted to the protection of us from kidnapping. And I will say that one of the things that most often has provoked people to get upset with one another in the middle of the night is noise.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I bring it up.
And, and I, I think this is an easy solution. I think people are thinking about what might be, but when you actually measure from the site to the property line, it may be totally different and nothing needs to be done.
Yeah. Point of emanation to the point of receipt. Absolutely right. Yes, sir.
And, and, you know, I'm sure y'all complained about those eighteen-wheelers going to that post office that night. I'm just teasing. They do make a lot of noise.
There, there are people who have gradually become adjusted to the level of sound coming from State Highway Six.
Yeah. And Highway Six is annoying. There's a lot of buffering between Highway Six and that, so it's probably looking a lot better in the back end of the service station.
At any rate, I would like to say that our board of directors has been kept up to date primarily because of Anthony.
Yes.
And they are comfortable with this project. They've just asked me to come and get reassurance on that one point. So I thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We found out a long time ago that if the developers will sit down with HOAs before it gets to this point, they go a long way. And like I said, I've worked with CC for well over two years on this and when it came up, I had Anthony sit in on this, on the meetings and then ask him to come to the HOA and discuss the point.
And he has done that very effectively.
Mr. Mayor, I need to, I need to change my motion if the second will accept to include the performance standards at the second reading.
Okay. All right.
Let's steal second.
All right.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, come up.
Please, uh.
Thank you.
Restaurants do have a lot of controls because this problem happens all the time. If you live in River Oaks, you don't want the restaurant next door to be making a lot of noise. And I know that for a fact because that's what happens.
Right.
There are restricted times, there are restricted decibels on the amount of noise that you perform, and there is a lot of police also that come and, and put everybody in place. This is basically, eh, something that it was asked us to do, to, instead of having a call back o, o, on a, on a, on a, basically, eh, eh, dead area, we could animate that by having some terraces with some sort of, eh, functions, dun-dun. Cafe and, 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 and cookies don't make a lot of noise. So, normal, we don't have to play jazz every night, and if they do, well, they're gonna have to buy one of these places on front by Highway six, and then they can have all the jazz they want. But, but in the other side, we can control. Also, timing is controlling this thing. Many times I had to wait on a Sunday till, till the, the place opens at eleven o'clock. You know, there's a lot of restrictions that will put us into that.
And you have your own restrictions to that yourselves.
Yeah, of course. And then we are gonna boulevard this whole thing with landscaping and all that. The idea of the terraces is for view, and, and that's basically what I wanted to say, but I'm, eh.
That's, I understand that.
Yeah.
That's a bad thing to have to deal with, but I'm just glad to see it happening, so.
Yeah.
All right, there was a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just, I just want to say that this PD is a great example of maximizing twenty-four acres when the city is running out of land, and we need to get the highest values that we can get to go on that land.
Yeah, I agree. I'm going under by the next piece. All right, been a motion and a second and a discussion. Now, vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Let's get started on, tired of talking about it. All right, item seven B, there are no public hearings. Item eight, appointments, there are no appointments. Item A, authorization, item A, is considerized, consider, authorize the acceptance of a gift deed from Taylor Morrison of Texas Inc. conveying a ten-acre tract of land on Hagerson Road. Yes?
Mayor Council, this, um, dates back to a parkland dedication which, uh, uh, City Council approved back in February. Uh, this is for a ten-acre tract of land off of Hagerson Road, which will be.
Not in the city.
A new future park, and this, uh, item allows us to accept, uh, this land, so we can start mowing it.
Uh, this land, for clarification, is not in the city limits, uh, which means that basically general fund monies can't be used for this land, except for maintenance, since, since we own it. Uh, I mean, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, this is not the only piece of property that we have in our ETJ that'll be potential future parkland.
Yeah, and that's part of the subdivision ordinance, why that requirement is being made, but in terms of actually developing as a park, it has to come from some other funds other than the general fund.
Do we have a map of where that is?
You know where it is. It's just southeast of Elkins High School across Old Thompson Ferry Road.
Used to be a place called a wellness camp, right there on Hagerson Road. It's being developed. We're on the other side of the levee.
Is.
It's just down by the river, actually.
Is it in the flood zone?
Yeah.
Yep.
It is in the flood zone, so it can be used for anything else.
That's right.
Parkland is perfect, perfect use for that, this property.
And it's positioned in a park zone.
I guess we need to make a motion.
Yeah.
Move to adopt. Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, I have. Move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, are we gonna leave it natural, or are, are we, do we plan on a, a development?
We don't have a development planned for right now. Actually, it's, it's been used as, uh, uh, rangeland, so there's some big, beautiful, mature pecan trees, uh, on the property, and, and it's pretty clear, other than that, uh, it's, it's actually a very beautiful piece of property.
Okay.
But for clarification, we can't develop it until that land either comes into the city, or we get some sort of grant to develop that land outside of the city.
Okay.
The park zone is only assigned because the subdivision ordinance required it to be in, in the park zone.
I guess one of the questions that I ask councilmember is whether or not park zone funding is allowable or not, because I was under the impression, uh, that does it have to be in the general, I mean, in the city limits in order, because we have some areas that are not in.
I said general fund money.
I got that, yeah.
You ain't gonna get much more park zone money, because all that area is developed out of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, unless they can't develop this anyway, so that's why they give it to us.
Yeah. Now, I'm very specific to see which fund I was talking about. Okay.
But I think the good thing is, it's ten acres, and I think with the state grants, there may be some opportunity, particularly from, um, the natural piece of it to, uh, preserving it, so we, uh, we'll, we'll look at what opportunities that may be available from the state.
Apply for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant?
Can we? Yeah. Yeah, we can. We, we have, we have several pieces of parkland in this area of the city that, that are.
Right.
For future development.
Yeah.
Well, my, my point is for somebody to sit there and see parkland and then say.
Why, the city, the city is not doing it. I got you. I got you.
That's my point.
Yeah.
All right. Mayor Protim Ford made the motion. Council Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine D is consider authorize an execution of a maintenance agreement of wastewater capacity between Quail Valley Utility District and the City of Missouri City. Is there a motion?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Council Wyatt made the motion. Council Bonney made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine C is consider authorize the mayor to sign the official flat of Lake Shore Harbor, Section Eight, which contains approximately four-point-one-five-five acre tract of land owned by the City of Missouri City. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Council Wyatt made the motion. Council Bonney made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item D is consider authorize acceptance of utility deeds from Fort Bend County Municipal District Number Forty-Eight for infrastructure serving Park Edge and Dry Creek Village. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Council Bonney made the motion. Council Wyatt made the second. Is there a discussion? Not all those in favor? Motion carries. Item E is consider authorize an execution of a maintenance agreement between Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number Twenty-Six, known as Pootie.
Yep.
Yeah. And the City of Missouri City for the regional drainage and retention facilities for the Mustang Trails Development. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. You know, this is another one of those projects that we've worked on for a long time, and the importance here is that it really does two things. Uh, one is it puts more pe, new people into the area, which we definitely need, but the other thing, it also supports the utility district in terms of its own, and Mud Twenty-Six has not been one of the fastest, largest-growing utility districts that we have, so anything that we can push that way is a benefit in two ways, both to the city and to the utility district.
Mayor.
Yes?
I just wanted to make, make, uh, note related to, um, um, the forty-eight for nine, that it's potential that, uh, about forty million dollars of, of, of debt would have to be issued, uh, related to that. So, uh, when we, uh, as, as you know, we're going through the, uh, mud, uh, strategic plan, but in the, in essence, uh, we just wanted to make sure Scott and I that, uh, it's noted that there will have to be debt issued related to, to this going forward.
And, and just, not all that debt, not all that is for this one project. There are several development projects occurring in that district.
Right.
Did we vote?
Yeah.
All right. Item E, I first consider authorize an licensing agreement between, and I need to correct this, it should read Pootie Homes instead of Fort Bend Council Municipal Utility District Number Twenty-Six. It's, it's wrong on the agenda, but it was posted right as Pootie, so you can correct that. And the City of Missouri City for the construction of regional drainage and retention areas. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Council Wyatt made the motion. Council Bonney made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, do that alone. And G is consider authorize an agreement with the City of Rosenberg for cooperative purchasing. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
There a second?
Second.
President made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, item ten, ordinances, ten A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, providing for a general election to be held on November sixth, twenty eighteen, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two at-large council members, providing for joint elections on November sixth, twenty eighteen,